Wednesday, September 3rd, 2014. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski. Please rise for a moment of silent meditation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
This morning, we ask that we remember, excuse me, those that are less fortunate than we are. In any and every way, we ask that we remember those who've lost loved ones since the last time we were in these chambers. We also ask our God and Creator to give us the wisdom and the proper information to make the best decisions for the citizens of the city of Erie.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Perpetual minutes from the meeting of August 20th, 2014, and bills for payment on September 5th and 12th, 2014. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Are there any requests for repository sales? Are there any requests for repository sales? Are there any requests for repository sales? Okay, here in none. At 9:30, we have a public hearing, and we will dispense of other items on the agenda until that is completed. Right now, we have citizens to be heard, and Mr. Randy Barnes. And council offer their condolences to you, Mr. Barnes.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that, President Witherspoon. My name's Randy Barnes, 109 Walton Point, Erie, Pennsylvania. And because in politics, a month is like a year, and two months are like five years, I wanted to read from the minutes of the July 16th, 2014 meeting. Start up by, by Mr. Winarski, sent in by Mr. Witherspoon, resolved, et cetera, that James Clembe hereby retained as consultant to Erie City Council and the city of Erie as archivist for two-year period on a retainer of $1,000 a month. Authorize the proper city officials execute necessary documents effective August 1st till July 31st. City Council adopted by yeas, council members, Heran Kunko, Jones, Winarski, Witherspoon. For... It was interesting that night, after much discussion in the back room, that no one wanted to say anything on, for the record. But so I thought that maybe it'd be best if we continue to talk about this a little bit on the record. Botheres me a little bit is, we do have a respected city employee that worked here for 48 years, and the week he announces retirement, he announces that there's a lot of projects that haven't gotten done in those 48 or whatever years. So I wonder if maybe council is missing out here, and maybe the office is understaffed. My understanding, there's only three employees in the clerk's office, which I think gives us about a 405 man-hours a month. We know about five of those hours are contributed to sitting in meetings like this. So with only 400 hours, I'm wondering if city council should be thinking of adding some people to this office, so we don't go dozens and dozens of years, and when valuable employees retire, they tell us that there's all these things they haven't been able to do because not enough manpower. And I realize the clerk's office does a lot of things besides what we see before us today. But what we see is before us today, if we count up the ordinances, there's 10 ordinances and parts of new business resolutions, and of course, the contract orders. If we get 10 or 11 items, if we extrapolate that a couple times a month, we're talking maybe 20 or 30 items on the agenda, and only 400 hours to accomplish that. But the month has gone past, and I was wondering if council has any kind of documentation or reporting as what has been accomplished on these valuable projects the archivist has been hired to do in the past month. And of course, I don't expect an answer, but I expect that you seven council people are probably well aware of what the taxpayers' $1,000 has gotten in the past 12, or in the past 30-some days, since the contract started August 1st. So I think it'll be interesting, because as you take this information, as this archivist works here and, and works on these projects that haven't been able to be accomplished in his 48 years of working in City Hall, that you will be able to take that information and say, you know what? We need to revamp this office, and we need more employees. We need to get this city clerk's office up to speed, so we don't have to have these part-time people come called back in from retirement. So I do hope that council, even though, I'm not sure that council even knows what's going on and what they're getting for this $1,000 a month. But I think as the next 6, 8, 10, 12, 23 months that we talk about this twice a month when I come to the meetings, that maybe we'll have some information forthcoming as to what we've accomplished over those next 6, 12, 23 months that's left on the contract. Because I think as the taxpayers, as the citizens that are paying extra for garbage realize that we couldn't run City Hall without a big garbage increase, but yet we're able to add additional employees. Now, I realize that, yeah, there was some money there in a fund, and that we're using that money, but it's still that we had to raise the garbage fee in order for City Hall to function this year. We had to raise fees in order to pay these extras for archivists. All right. Well, hey, thank you very much, and I appreciate your time, and I look forward to talking to you again, and have a nice afternoon.
Thank you, sir. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Morning.
I want to thank the council that I talked about cutting those trees now up on 22nd Street. I thank you for taking care of that. Look different. Maybe won't nobody get mugged up through there now. I, I was talking about those cameras on the police vans. Have you all discussed that, or is it worth a thought? Have you all discussed that? All you gotta do is give me a yes or no. That's all, that's why I'm asking you.
Yes.
Okay. At least you discussed it. I appreciate that. You know, I was looking at this paper last night about that cop that choke, put that illegal choke on that guy up there in New York. They're telling me here on the paper, officials call action appropriate. Here's an outlaw tactic, but it's appropriate. You can't have it both ways. Either it was wrong, or it was right. Somebody seemed to not know what wrong or right is. I, I don't know. I really don't know. Because if somebody did that to me, I'd want them to go and kill me, because she gonna kill me later on anyway. Because I couldn't go for that. There's a song out back down the road that, "I can't go for that," and I couldn't go for it. I'd rather be dead for somebody to treat me like that, like I'm inhuman. But I, I'm seeing this trend across the country. They ain't killing nothing but black men. That guy shot that woman in the face. I was surprised that he didn't get off with that. Giving them cops them guns, but you better tell them how to use them, because people's gonna get tired of that after a while, and they're gonna start shooting back. Then y'all won't like that. You just won't like it. I'm, that patrolman out in California was beating that woman out there on the expressway. I don't know. Black men don't seem to stand up for their women. Ain't nothing white men mistreated look like compared to the way they treat black men. And killing women too. We don't mean nothing. Them foreigners are treated better than we are when they come in. That's gonna change one day. That's gonna change. I promise you that. I remember when I was a boy, back during that Second World War. Hitler was shipping the Jews, they gathering them up, shipping them out. But the Jews didn't know where they were going. When they found out that he was putting them in them ovens and killing them, and the Jews were always loving people, they killed Jesus, but they say still, it wasn't people that would fight. If you read your Bible, then many of you up there probably read the Bible. If you did, things would be better in the city. But anyway, you ought to get a Bible and glance at it every once in a while. It'll kind of give you a different mindset. May, might put you on the right track. I don't know. Some of us, we just, I don't know, don't have a mind, let somebody else run it. But anyway, when the Jews found out what was going on, they start fighting back. When these people find out that it's, I don't know, it's all right to kill black folks, they start killing back. I don't know. Everything don't go on forever. Everything comes to an end eventually, because we're gonna die. You ought to think about dying, because you won't make it to heaven being prejudiced. God don't see no prejudice up there. You won't make it, you won't make it to the gate. God is love. A lot of you thank you, love, but you don't, you hate. I have to wonder, is the police force a member of the kook-up clan? We, I see these around here, they ball-headed and got all them, and we, I talked to you about that. It's all right for them to have them, but you should make them cover them up, because they look gang-related. They look gang-related. That ain't asking for too much, but anything I ask, it seem to be too much. But I tell you what, I'll cross your mind one day, and you'll see what I meant, but it'll be too late then, because you be, the can of worms cannot be closed back up. I think you better look into that, putting them cameras on them cars. I think it's a good idea. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Mike. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
My name is Stephen Gleason. I live at 1262 West 9th Street, and I'm here because my wife can't be here. She's Lisa Austin. She asked me to read this letter, please. While the sons of Lake Erie have ensured a ribbon of public pathways along the water's edge, there appears to be no plan to organically link public amenities to bluff-top neighborhoods. This flaw in our waterfront master plan zoning code and in the evaluation process of the Planning Commission and Design Review Board must be addressed. Meanwhile, City Council has come to the rescue by mandating a community benefit by creating a landscaped public plaza at the New Convention Center Hotel. City Council need, council members, Erie needs your help again. While our cities bluff and highways serve as barriers, they present an opportunity, especially with Tom Kennedy's Cobblestone Hotel proposed for the foot of Liberty Street. The Cobblestone's standard suburban building could be redesigned for the benefit of the city and Mr. Kennedy's hotel guests. By moving the hotel slightly south against the bluff, a rooftop hotel deck could eventually extend the pedestrian access to and from Liberty Street while providing a dramatic elevated view of the waterfront. The hotel could be redesigned to permit an eventual pedestrian overpass, helping to make the Cobblestone a regional landmark and revitalizing West Bayfront neighborhoods. From the Cobblestone, guests could walk a few blocks for barbecue at the 3B Saloon, take a walk in Gridley Park, shop at U-Frame-It, tour mansions on West 6th, or someday to visit the irreplaceable jewelry box, the Villa Chapel. John O. Norquist, former mayor of Milwaukee and former president of the Congress for the New Urbanism, said if communities like Erie want their waterfronts to come alive, they should build small cafes, bars, and retail outlets to reflect the people and the culture. In order to spur such private development, Marilyn Jordan Taylor, dean of the University of Pennsylvania School of Design, says that cities must first create high-quality public spaces. High-quality spaces include plazas, public art, parks, fountains, and attractions like the sea organ suggested by Pearl Fisher. To energize a city, Enrique Penalosa, the renowned former mayor of the happy city of Bogota, Colombia, claims that good pedestrian space, having many inviting pathways and connections, is the key to vital cities. Members of City Council, please direct Mr. Tom Kennedy to rethink his Cobblestone Hotel so that it may contribute to pedestrian circulation to and from the bluff and along the waterfront. Please continue to lobby for exceptional inviting public amenities that will be able to attract the kinds of businesses to make our waterfront come alive year-round with small cafes, bars, and retail outlets, reflecting Erie's history and culture. My wife would also like me to leave you each copies of the Erie Reader with an article in there from her and Steve Sonnenberg, and a copy of the letter, if you could. Thank you very much for your time and your service. Have a good night.
Thank you. Before any other citizen comes, I didn't want to cut the gentleman off at all once he started. But if you, we're gonna have a hearing at 9:30 on the Kennedy project, and at that time, we will ask for pros and cons, and you'll have that opportunity to speak on that issue. Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Here in none rows, continue to the agenda until 9:30.
Okay. Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 15883, official ordinance number 29, 2014. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $250,000 from unappropriated revenue received from a Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Act 101, Section 92 Recycling Development and Implementation Grant, and providing for the expenditure thereof. By Mr. Winarski and seconded by Mr. Witherspoon, that council file ordinance bill number 15883, and now known as official file ordinance number 29, 2014, be finally passed by the City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. City Council pass official file ordinance number 29 of 2014, finally by yeas, seven, Ordinance for first reading. Council File Number 15884, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $32,079.28 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for construction oversight services for the historic Little Italy street scape improvement project. By Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Brennan, the council file number 15884, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by City Council. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. City Council read and adopt council file ordinance number 15884 by yeas, seven, nays, zero, on first reading. Council File Number 15885. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $10,920.80 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to provide for the expenditure thereof for construction monitoring services for the Perry Square curb bump-out project. By Mr. Mersky and seconded by Mr. Brennan, the council file ordinance number 15885, having been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by the City Council. Mr. Brennan?
Ms., Ms. Roby, we just have a second. Mr. President?
Yes.
This is Perry Square bump-out. I know there's another corresponding item on contracts, but is this, does anybody have any more information about this Perry Square bump-out project? On the council? We have a memo, but it just says that we're essentially awarding a contract as a consultant, engineering consultant for that project, but I didn't know if anybody could kind of talk about what's gonna happen there. Because I'm, I know council had had a lot of complaints about the bump-outs on different sections of State Street and Peach Street. I don't know if we have a, anybody could report on that. Jill, would you have any on that?
I'll find out.
I don't know if design, well, I just wondered if design is being considered, or any changes, or that we're gonna be doing more of the same, or what are we doing there at Perry Square?
Okay. Is it your wish to table it, or?
Could we have somebody maybe come down and talk about it this, after the public hearing?
Don't we have to take two votes on that?
Yeah, second vote, too.
This is the, this is the ordinance to appropriate, and then there's a contract later on, or the, under...
Hold a second reading, anyway.
Actually, that not, it's a resolution, I'm sorry, to, to do a contract under number, item number four, under new business. So we could vote on this one.
Yeah, it's the first reading, and that'll give administration the opportunity to get, get us the information requested.
Yeah, if you could provide something to us, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, continue on with the voting. Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon. City Council read and adopt.
I move the balance of the agenda. I mean, excuse me, Ms. Roby, for interrupting you, but I wanted to move the balance of the agenda.
Okay. Any separations?
I'd like to separate item one under new business.
Excuse me. It's been moved and seconded.
All right, moving the balance of, of the agenda. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Okay. Well, it's not 9:30 yet. Mr. Kwiatowski?
Yes, I'll make this real quick. The reason why I introduced this resolution concerning the mail facility on East 38th, it's another negative step in what I see as the, you know, bringing down the city of Erie to a second-class status. We don't need this. It's great when you have a facility such as that in your city. We are the fourth-largest city, and I think sometimes the US government forgets that. It's not just a question of us walking across town to the other side of town, or whatever, but the economic impact alone of losing more family-sustaining jobs, we're losing more of our middle class slowly and slowly. And not only that, the quality of mail service. Those of us familiar with the northwest know that it snows up here quite a bit. Now, it took the late Senator Spector to change the minds of the federal government when they tried to move our VA facility out of Erie, when they told us it's only 120 miles south. When the committee had to come up here in the middle of February, they found out what our aged volunteers who drive the vehicles and drive the aged veterans to Pittsburgh for their so-called medical care that they weren't gonna get in Erie, they quickly discovered that 120-mile trip in winter is much like a 240-mile trip. And it snowed with small significance that our newspaper, who now publishes in Butler, you notice the difference in the delivery of that newspaper at various times due to weather. So to further add to the public that they're gonna tell us that if I want a mail letter across town, and now it has to go to Pittsburgh during the middle of winter, and tell me it's gonna be the same service, I fail to believe that. So on many accounts, I think, this is necessarily tell them that, you know, Erie is a very large presence. The nearest cities are all 120 miles away from us, or more. The fact that the weather alone, but the economic impact in this community, and we do not need, and nobody knows what the government's gonna do, we do not need another empty building on the east side of town or the west side of town. And we do and can use the jobs that this facility will create, and with that, I think, if anybody else wants a comment, fine. I just think we need to go forward and tell them that we're tired of Erie being, you know, singled out to give more and more back.
Very good. And I think we all agree with that. And we had a presentation by Jake Rowell on jobs this morning, and that falls right into that category. Hey, it's 9:30, and we will...
We have to vote on this, Mr. President.
Excuse me?
We have to vote on this.
Oh, okay.
Okay, resolution sponsored by Mr. Kwiatowski and seconded by Mr. Mersky. A resolution of the Erie City Council in support of keeping the Erie General Mail Facility open and fully operational. Whereas the US Postal Service operated the Erie General Mail Facility located at 2108 East 38th Street, Erie, PA, and whereas the USPS has stated that they are facing ongoing decline in mail volumes over the past decade, in response, the USPS has announced the closing of the Erie General Mail Facility, which opened in 1980. Whereas the city, local businesses, and residents depend on the Erie General Mail Facility for first-class and bulk mail services, and the city is concerned that consolidating operations to other cities and service centers will lead to a loss of jobs, hurt Erie's economy, and negatively affect mail service to the city of Erie's residents and businesses. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council supports keeping the Erie General Mail Facility open and fully operational. Mr. Brennan, Mrs. Rancunzo, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kwiatowski, Mr. Mersky, Mr. Winarski, Mr. Witherspoon.
Okay. Is the stenographer here?
She's here. In the back room.
Well, she needs to come out in the front room. Ah, there she is.
Right here. Oh. Here's it coming.
We'll let the stenographer set up, and this'll be the public hearing concerning the request for water front conditional use submitted by Thomas Kennedy for the construction of a three-story hotel at the foot of Liberty Street just off the Bayfront Parkway.
Are we ready? Okay. Please give us your name, address, and your presentation.
My name is Thomas Kennedy. I live in 20715 here in the city of Erie. I'm a professional development associate and I'm joined here by two of my colleagues here, Melanie Stodges with Professional Development Associates and John Evans, who's in Architect with, uh, Eric Mattson, Architect. We're here this morning as part of a process for development of property in Erie, especially when it comes to development in the condition of this area. This is probably the third or more presentation we've made on the project. I know we presented the project to you already, but this is on behalf of the public so they can have comments and understand what we're doing. Within the last couple of months, we've also presented our project to the Design Review Committee, the Planning Commission, as well as through the Planning Commission, and received their approval. I believe in parking because this is a fully compliant project. We did not see, saw any variance requests. It is the outgrowth of a feasibility study we have conducted or had per-perf conducted on behalf of a year ago. Taking a look at hospitality market in the city of Erie, specifically taking a look at what's being offered on the outskirts of the city, what's currently available in the city, and what's, and more importantly, what's planned for the bayfront. So, a serious look at the convention center, Sheridan, the new hotel is being, has been approved for the convention center, and the development is planned by Scott Enterprises. So, that's just a little bit of background for the benefit of those who aren't familiar with what we're doing. I brought a picture of the site that we're developing. I know you've seen it before, so maybe I'll turn it this way and I can come back around. At the foot of Liberty Street across from the Pepsi Amphitheater and the, or the Burger King.
Oh, yeah.
And the Sloppy Duck. For the past 10 years, we've owned a piece of property and we've looked at various opportunities for development of property, both at office building and residential use. And what has gravitated to this point is the possibility of doing a small boutique hotel. It's below bluff level, it's only three stories high, low within the 50-foot height limitation of the bayfront. And as you can see, here's a view looking out towards the bay. This is looking at the hillside, and this is the entrance to Liberty Street. To give you a little bit better perspective of what we have planned, this is a site plan that shows the Erie Bayfront Parkway and an entrance right at the Liberty Street location where you may see there's work going on already. One of the, one of the things that we did as part of our ownership of the property is we granted Port Authority an easement, who actually come across our property, who have a walkway that you see being built right now, and also for them to install a traffic signal. Our understanding of the traffic signals, on-demand type signals, so that people who are standing there waiting for us to hit the signal and trigger it will be triggered randomly coming down there. And the intent is, if you've ever been walking along the Bayfront Highway on the north side, it's a dangerous road to cross. And I've seen kids running across, adults running across in their way. And I think the intent of that walkway was to channel people to a much more, much safer grade crossing. We, quite frankly, and one of the reasons we granted easements benefited from that development, in that what we're doing is subsidizing, but paying for a fourth light for that light, was originally supposed to just stop traffic going either direction and for traffic coming out of Liberty Street Amphitheater. We're going to be adding a fourth light so that it gives us the ability through our development to actually let people come out and use that signal as well. In addition, as the far east side of our site, we have a limited access entrance, so the people coming off our site don't have to trigger that light that they could maybe have a sound turn without disrupting traffic. So, again, this is just a site plan for those of you who are not familiar with it and how it plays out. This would be the hotel, again, below bluff level, the entrance from Liberty Street parking and then then out that way and then out this way. To give you a feel for what we have planned, this is a cobblestone hotel as envisioned for the site. It's a three-story, we throw around the term boutique hotel, boutique meaning small. The intent of our hotel here is, quite frankly, is to be an attractive alternative to people that stay off the interstate and don't come down to the small community. It's a lower price per room rate for our hotel versus someone might be going to the convention center and spending 150 or more for a hotel. So, what we're envisioning is potentially parents or students that may be considering Gannon, people that work in the downtown community or doing business with Erie Insurance or people at the hospital. It's being an alternative to staying up in an asphalt parking lot hotel and actually stay down in a place where maybe you can come and experience some of the things that we all know of Erie that's often. An example would be a run. I mean, a runner who comes into this business in Erie, who's staying up on East Street, runs around all the traffic, would be a great location for them to say is an alternative than walk or run the bayfront walkway. So, again, the size of the hotel, the configuration of the hotel, all came out of a study that was done on RBDH in Cobblestone. A little bit about Cobblestones, for those of you who haven't heard of it, is a fairly new franchise. It only started about 10 years ago and started to be a limited hotel that was not going to be franchised. And quickly grew because they focused strictly on smaller communities, to the point of their 40 Cobblestones now in existence, we're one of their first franchises, which is kind of cool. And they're currently having plans, I think there's 30 under development right now, so very quickly within a 10-year period, they've grown. As that actually featured on the Today Show as one of the hotels and then the location that they picked out. And to give you a little bit of feel for our commitment to Cobblestone, we've entered into agreement to build five of them. We would like the bayfront one to be our flagship hotel for appropriated terms. But we're already under construction for our first one, it's being built in Cory. It's actually scheduled for completion in October and opening in November. If anybody would like to stop down and take a look at it, it's a smaller hotel, it's only two stories. And 37, this will be three stories and 57. And then we've signed an agreement to do a third one up at Penn State, right outside the entrance to Penn State. And so, we're looking for it hopefully in that, to deliver that community field. And then we're looking at other sites. So, we're excited to be here. We appreciate the opportunity to present and to the public and we'll answer any questions at all. We've been through, like I say, several steps of the process. It's fully compliant and we think it's a great, a great project for Erie and we're excited to get started on it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kennedy.
Mr. President, before you ask for speakers, can we just pass the drawings around real quick and then put them back on the easel so we can look at them closely?
Sure, we can.
I can't see that far.
The side of the rent re-own right now is for site planning purposes. That's not going to be what's involved.
I got to ask a question. Entrance to the hotel, the driveway entrance is kind of where that light is? Is that what you're saying, Tom? Where that light will be?
The main entrance, the main entrance where they drop off at the entrance to the hotel is at Liberty Street.
Okay. And then you will have in front between the bayfront parkway and the hotel, will this be a driving, drive-through area to the parking lot?
That is correct. There's a drive area and then, right now, in compliance with zoning, there's actually a walkway, sidewalk that goes in front there. The only concern that they came out of the Planning Commission on that is it's required by ordinance. However, it will be a sidewalk to nowhere and it's been suggested maybe to look at whether or not that sidewalk should be eliminated so that we don't have people come to the light, continue on that sidewalk and end up...
And they go nowhere.
... dropping and there's a retaining wall there and then going across the street. But we were required to include that in the design plan right now and it was kind of left as an open item to work for. We're willing to do it either way.
Is there a curb, is there a curb tree lawn between the bayfront and the sidewalk?
Yes.
Or is it against the curb?
There's a swell there for snowboarder and green space. I believe the sidewalk is on the inside of that, not right along the curb.
Not right along the curb.
Yeah, this might, this was for that plan.
Yeah.
And this, this walkway here goes to nowhere.
Just to the end of your driveway, or your parking?
Yeah, we already have a walkway in front of the hotel as well, so there's two walkways. So, that, we're just concerned people come down, or on bike, go past, and then all of a sudden end up at dead end and want to cross over. But it's required for ordinance to do that, so right now it's designed into the plan. Again, there's in the months to the rate of development, we want to address that.
Hey, Tom.
I'm sorry, Kansas.
What's the, did they, did they tell you what the future plans is for the south side of that, where that sidewalk? Because I got a sidewalk in my house, it goes nowhere too. But the hope is that, you know, you link the whole neighborhood up. Is there any plans that there's going to be a sidewalk there in the future for, or will there be any other development, in other words?
No, the problem is, is the bluff getting very steep at that point. It's probably a 30-foot retaining wall there. There's a very, very narrow concrete apron along the curb that people kind of, they have a walk sideways to go along it, but there's really no place for development at that end of the site.
So, that, your, your project seems to be about the only one that's going to maybe fit in there for a while, for maybe...
The retaining wall.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's nothing else to look at. I mean, you know, I guess potentially we should put a little bicycle rental stand somewhere here. I mean, we don't have any plans for that. But again, there's no, there's no way it will be on our property in a safe manner.
But essentially, the idea is that with the Port Authorities Project coming down the bluff and getting people across to the north side, so their intention has never been to get people walking on the south side. No one has intended for that.
I believe they have another plan to bring people on the east side of the bayfront or east side of the amphitheater, down from the bluff and cross at a different location. But again, you have this massive retaining wall in between us. They were never intended to link.
Okay.
I don't think in any way...
No, I don't think the plan...
Unless you move the parking.
Yeah, no. So, so people from above could come down, walking down to your hotel if, say, they had reason to? Or they could go up and go up in the neighborhood, go up, walk around the neighborhood from there?
Yeah, with granted easement to construct as well as allow access across. I think, I mean, we may very well have a bit of a challenge managing parking when there's a bed out there because it certainly will be a great place for people to park, you know, rather than walk down. But, I mean, that's just an operation.
Okay. Thanks, Tom.
We have a question for Tom at this time.
Yeah? Tom, what is the traffic flow like for cars coming around the parking lot? I think I heard some discussion on that, but I wanted to see what, now that I'm looking at a drawing there.
You know, it's interesting, there was a traffic study done when they were putting the signal in. If you look at the volume of traffic that would be turning into Sloppy Duck, the amphitheater, the marinas and everything, I think we're less than 5% of that. We looked at a number of, if the hotel was full and 54 rooms, you had someone coming in, leaving, okay, you really only looking probably 300 or 200 cars a day. With the two ins and outs, it's real small compared to the volume.
What I just meant is, is like one, in only and egress only, or did that type of flow? How it...
Where the light is, it's in and out.
Okay.
And where the other exit is, it's in and out, but it's only outbound east.
So, yeah, you have to go east then? Okay.
In fact, I think it was end out or the Planning Commission has just assigned that exit, so it had like a curve type that would, when there's weight in turn.
Mr. Kennedy? Mr. President? If I could address him. In terms of the elevation, in the back versus the front, is there going to, what's the difference and how does that affect, you know, in terms of elevation, the parking lot and that type of thing? Are you excavating to make a level lot or is it, how are you, how are you addressing that?
That's an excellent question. One of the biggest design challenges for the hotel is the fact that we have that bluff.
Right.
It really gains steep or slope quickly. Right now, what we're really working through is replacing the hotel east to west and from a height standpoint. So, it's high enough that we don't have to go into the bluff very much, but not so high that when you pull out in winter, you're on a false storefront. Right now, what we're looking at is the backside of the first floor of the hotel will not have any rooms or windows because we will probably be digging into that hillside a little bit. But then when you get up to the second floor where the rooms are, they're, they're open to visual, to be able to see outside. So, it'll be a slope bank or it'll remain landscaping, in part, keeping the landscape there to keep the integrity of the banking waste as well.
And then, in terms of water retention or water diversion, that seems like with the steep flow, you know, that that's a natural flow for the water and then there's that gully there, how did you address like any water issues or anticipate any storm retention management and that kind of thing?
Really good question. Laird Engineers is doing site design for us. There's actually a 54-inch storm line that comes across our property that goes into the bay. The challenge is with the lake level, the bay level, it's about that full. So, as a result of that, there's some major work in terms of, and we're looking at two different systems, a sub-underground baking system and a drainage system to actually collect any groundwater and then gradually feed it into existing stormwater lines down the way it's going. So, that is an engineering task that's required for some of that will get some preliminary in mind, but I don't find one yet.
Okay.
Would love to be able to tap right into that big line, but it doesn't look like we'll be able to, so subsurface regange.
And then, with, with the hotel, in terms of, you know, we were just talking about jobs, in terms of jobs, what are we looking at as a local impact for employment from the construction and development of this hotel?
Well, what, I thought you were going to ask from an operational standpoint, it's probably, you know, six to eight full-time equivalents or six to 10, it's not a high labor operation there. From a construction standpoint, you're looking at a $5 million project, you'd imagine it follows like the majority of the labor, so I'd be $5 million payroll over the course of the next year.
Okay. And then with that, and you, you might have, I've lost what I was going to say, it was about with the hotel, it'll come back to me. Oh, man, I just had it and then I was listening to your question or your answer. There was with, oh, you have more property, based on the pictures on the other side, do you have plans in the future to develop that other side?
We don't have any plans at all at this point on the drawing board or otherwise. There is a little bit of property here, if you use the term, you know, maybe a bike shop or something.
Right, okay.
Possibility for some very limited retail media development there that would tie in and that would be the difference, the fact we come up with something there. The restaurant itself, the restaurant, the hotel itself, they operate in communities in many cases where there aren't amenities. There's a little convenience store in the hotel and a small wine and beer bar that actually, they want people to come and feel like they want to come back multiple times. So, I mean, there is potential, you know, for a little gift shop here maybe that would tie in with that or something to kind of keep people there. I really think the, the big economic driver for us can be, an example would be Junior from Sloppy, said we may just be the thing that turns something to a year-round operation, you know, in terms of the number of people that might be able to visit his restaurant facility, it's great amenity. I think it's going to be getting those people off the interstate and, you know, doing stuff with the businesses around town, playing golf or, you know, shopping or what have you.
Thank you.
Tom, with the families living on the bluff, there was a concern previously of their view being blocked. Where are we on that?
I don't know if there was any concern for this project. We presented an office building project that actually had a little elevator connection on the roof where we would allow people access to the building from Liberty Street. Although that was approved, that project would be clearly economically feasible. This is below the bluff and another thing we did is we designed rather than a flat roof, it's a pitched roof. So, this is... So this, this rendering doesn't show the bluff fully there. Well, when you're up on the bluff, you're actually looking at a roof. Okay, so you're not, you're not, your view isn't impeded. In fact, what we thought would be a really great opportunity to have rooms with views, we're actually below, there's plantings on the north side of the street that have matured quite a bit, trees. And the only time we really have a direct view of the bay out of our, I think, third story is when there's no foliage on those trees. So we're not, we're not impeding any view.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions for Tom?
Mr. President, just if I could, Mr. Kennedy, this is a privately funded financed project, right?
This is, it's a project that's funded privately with local investors, local banks, and then we do have a loan from the city, from the revolving loan fund, but it's an interest-bearing, fully amortizing loan. I believe that was when we presented this project.
Oh, right, last time, right, right. Thank you.
I remembered my question. And you might have said this already and I might have missed it, what's the timeline, anticipated timeline for the construction of this project?
We've been really working hard to try to be able to start construction before the weather turns. The process and complexity of design, you may not allow that, that doesn't happen, it will be first thing in the spring. Really, if we're going to get started in the fall, you have to get enough work done so the work you've done doesn't just sit there and deteriorate for the winter. And right now, the hotel, those of you who might be familiar long-term, how is it done down there? I mean, people would, that's all fill material, so we basically have to go down the shale and support the property either with caissons or actually completely excavated and refilled with material. So there's a lot of site work that's going in and as aggressive as we've been and optimistic about getting started in the fall, it may slip to the spring, but either way, we'd be looking at a 2015 opening. I mean, we'd love to open Memorial Day next year, but that's going to be very challenging.
Thank you. Any further questions? Okay, Tom, thank you very much. Now we'll ask anyone to come to the mic, give us your name and address if you are in favor of the project.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Janice Bogarski. I'm a 35-year resident of 552 West 8th Street. I come before you this morning as a representative of our West Bayfront, a community organization whose mission is to enhance the quality of life in Erie's West Bayfront neighborhoods by promoting civic involvement, thoughtful development, historical preservation, and neighborhood pride. We would like to make a public statement and open the conversation concerning bayfront development and public access, specifically the development proposal before you for the 57-room Cobblestone Inn. It has been noted repeatedly in the sentiments of our residents of the West Bayfront who have reached out to our organization through surveys, meetings, and community events that bayfront access is very important to us all. There is a feeling of being cut off or isolated from bayfront development and a strong desire to participate as a community in bayfront decision-making. Lack of access would be a disservice to our neighborhood. We support neighborhood connection to bayfront development and see this as an opportunity to explore the ideas of giving our residents easier access to the bayfront, providing the hotel guests access to neighborhood amenities such as the parks, restaurants, and various businesses, and offering the possibility of supplying some of the workforce needs, excuse me, to this developer and to future businesses by our residents. We welcome the opportunity to speak to you today and respectfully request possible future meetings with Mr. Kennedy as the developer or his representatives or any interested parties for further discussion. Thank you for allowing me to address all of you today.
Thank you very much. Morning.
I'm Bonnie Little. I live at 3191 West 41st. I come to you today on behalf of Ray Schreckengost and the Erie Western Pennsylvania Port Authority. The Erie Western Pennsylvania Port Authority is pleased to see Mr. Kennedy's development come to fruition. We have worked with him over the years on many concepts for the site and feel that a mid-priced hotel is a great fit for the bayfront. Its proximity to Liberty Park and the Chestnut Street launch ramp should greatly enhance its facility. We strongly support this project and feel it fits well with our long-range plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any others to speak in favor of the project?
Council President, Council Members, Ed Kissel, 2815 Sigsbee. If I may turn the charter on for you. With their permission. This development is long, long coming. However, I am for it, but I'd like to have council look at some conditional uses that be attached to this for the betterment of the public. And number one would be the elimination of the sidewalk that the developer spoke about from the traffic light going east, with the condition that if development does occur to the east, that the landowner grant that conditional use to put that sidewalk in to bring pedestrians across on the south side, across their property, and who knows what can happen to the east in that area. So I would ask council to look at that condition, be granted that they don't have to put the sidewalk in. It'll be more green space and I believe they'll probably put shrubbery or something in there to make it look very nice in that particular area. A question to the developer, would there be any plans with this motel that's being built to ever add to the height onsite?
No, the structure is not designed to support anything other than, I guess conceivably it could be widened, but I don't really have enough site, property on the site to get, I know a hotel building, the area is positioned on the site, and then we'll, again, get a section of rooms if the demand were there, we'll be able to look at that for this.
And just for council's information, there is a large 72 or 90-inch diameter sanitary sewer system that runs in that bluff to the south of the hotel, motel. Also, I'd like to enter in the special warranty deed that I was part of for this property, which I won't get into. And there are conditions in here that, that they have met, but when this was done, it was anticipated that the hotel motel office building that was going to be put there would have had access from the building down to Liberty Street for pedestrians to go from the top of Liberty Street directly down. What Mr. Kennedy and the Port Authority have worked out is the Cascade Walkway, the million-dollar walkway from Second and Cascade that you see now being built along the bayfront to the west of this project, so that we will be able to get hopefully people down and crossing at least at that location where we never had it before. So I would like to enter in this special warranty deed. It's recorded in Book 0742, Page 1674, as part of this public hearing, as part of the record. So I thank you, and should be a nice project. I looked at their two-story project in Corey on Monday and it is moving along. Hopefully, the one on our bayfront will be much more oriented to waterfront design, which I believe the review committee should have put in that particular facet of their review to pick up that nautical waterfront design that we all hope will be a drawing point to our community. So I thank you.
And just one question on the warranty, the special deed. There's also an easement that we granted the Port Authority that will remain in effect should they ever want to do a connection from the bluff of the mystery. That's a perpetual easement and that remains there.
There is an easement in here similar to that, but I thank you for that concern.
Thanks. Are there anyone else to speak in favor of?
My name is Amanda Preschak and I'm a resident of 612 West Second. Thank you for having us today to, you know, invite all the neighbors here to hear this. I am definitely in favor of any development, tax development, and diverting guests to our fine town, down to the gem of our city. I think that's really wonderful. I do have one reservation, though. We have a tremendous amount of noise from the Sloppy Duck up where we live. I'm right on the bluff, no matter where I go in my condo, I can hear every word of the songs, word for word. So, Mr. Kennedy, I just have a question. Is this hotel going to be just rooms or is there going to be an entertainment aspect to it as well?
There's no outdoor entertainment.
Okay, okay. And then just with the future development, is that also going to stay away from that? Because, you know, I think I can put up with the Sloppy Duck in the summer on the weekends, but just the thought of like a year-round kind of deal?
You know, we're owners, will be owners of the hotel long-term and I can tell you that's probably the type of business that attracts me at least.
Okay, okay. Excellent.
So, no, there's, there's no planning.
Yeah.
Because that would open up additional parking requirements for people to visit it.
Okay. Phew. Okay, that's all I had, thank you.
I have a little concern for our people staying.
Yeah, that, listen, you might want to consider it loud.
Are there anyone else to speak in favor of? Are there anyone else to speak in favor of? Are there anyone else to speak in favor of? Hearing none. Are there anyone to speak against the project?
Yes, I'm not so much against the project, but maybe possible conditions put on this. My name is Felix Filetti, 12842 Ridge Road, West Springfield. Not too long ago, you put a stipulation on the Convention Center Hotel of a community benefit that allowed public access of an 800-square-foot plaza. I would like to know why this project gets treated differently than the project that was done at the Bayfront Hotel that was imposed at the last minute. Another concern I would have is at rush hour, when the hotel is very busy and people are pushing the button, button to change the light, you're going to back traffic up further on this hotel down there. You'll probably have a lot of people at that point come in here and complain about The Convention Center Authority, they provided local jobs that pay area standard wages and they also provided a minority component to encourage higher percentage of local minority tradespeople to do their construction work. I don't see the same terms and conditions with this project, whether it's public or private. It should be for the, the local community. Your project in Corey, while it does have some local participation, the bulk of the contractors and workers seem to come from Wisconsin and that with Brymark Builders, with the concrete, the drywall, those are not local people. I'd be curious to know if they're all paying the local taxes on that project also. So there's a lot to consider when you have a community benefit, when you're, you're looking at all these different conditions and that. But my main concern is I'd like to see that, that all these projects get treated the same then as what the Convention Center Authority did. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there anyone else to speak against the project? Anyone else to speak against the project? Come on up.
Hi, council members. My name is Lori Thompson Edwards. I live at 111 Plum Street and I, family has actually purchased property. I live in my grandfather's house that was way back in the original day when the city dump was at the, near Liberty Street. My concern is, is that when Conrail originally relinquished that property, it was given to the Bayfront Access and Beautification Organization Incorporated. In turn, and that organization, organization was set up to assure public access within the bayfront area, since it has become so much limited. How that property was acquired to a commercial zoning, I'm not sure, but I'm, I'm not against the project totally, but it's a matter of the neighborhood and how it was perceived originally to become public, to maintain a lot more public access. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there anyone else to speak against the project? Do anyone else speak against the project? Is there anyone else to speak against the project? Hearing none.
Armin Shemani, Secretary to the Planning Commission. Mr. President and members of council, the City of Erie Planning Commission at their regular meeting on July 15th of this year reviewed a proposal by Tom Kennedy for the construction of a three-story hotel at the foot of Liberty Street just off the Bayfront Parkway. The property is located in a waterfront commercial zoning district. After inspection and due consideration, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended the council approve the hotel. Commission believes that the hotel should be granted a building permit on the grounds that all of the design review committee's concerns were addressed. For safety purposes, easements have been granted. All questions were answered appropriately and the building is suitable for this district. The Planning Commission would also ask city council to consider the ramifications of requiring the sidewalk along the Bayfront Parkway, since they have concerns regarding Any questions?
Mr. Shemani, the statement you just read, "they have concerns regarding safety," who's "they"? The Planning Commission?
The Planning Commission, yes. They, both sides presented their cases and why it should be and why it shouldn't be.
Who's "both sides"?
Engineering for the city requires that new sidewalks be put in on all new construction. And so they didn't want to say, "don't do it" because that is a city ordinance.
Oh, okay.
And because if somebody's walking or riding their bike along this sidewalk, when there is no event, they have two choices, cross the street or go all the way back to the light. And they're afraid people would cross the street there and they didn't want to have a hearing at the Planning Commission. They thought this was the appropriate place for it to be done.
So the city engineering?
Requires sidewalks, yes.
And they presented that they want Mr. Kennedy to place a sidewalk there that goes from the one end of his property to the other?
They thought it would be a, a bad precedent to allow someone not to do a sidewalk. If they set that precedent, what would happen to the next place that didn't want to put a sidewalk in?
And the Planning Commission is concerned that someone will cross then, at the, at the east end of the sidewalk, in the middle of the street?
Correct.
So they're leaving it as council's decision to pull this from the conditional, you know?
I think you have the authority to make it a condition. You would probably have to ask the solicitor, we weren't sure at the, at the meeting either.
Can we violate the engineering provision, Mr. Carley, that says you need a sidewalk?
That's not a condition inherent in this zoning ordinance. That's an abatement of another ordinance, which is your sidewalk ordinance. So I think their concerns probably are well-placed.
How did we get around it with Hammett? I believe on going down the street, there's only sidewalk on one side, correct?
I don't know what you mean, Cass. Which, which?
What street is that, that goes down the bayfront?
Holland.
Holland, is there, was the sidewalk only on one side, right?
The east side.
Oh, yeah, that's right. Yeah, because we, all of a sudden, that was because of terrain or, I mean, what was it, Ed?
Because Hammett didn't want to precedent to that bay.
Okay.
He used the east side.
So precedent has been?
The council gave approval to that.
So we do have precedent all the time?
So we can make a condition that says that they don't have to put in sidewalk, or we can't do that?
If you ask my opinion, no. I mean, the Hammett just apparently just, they set aside enforcement of the, of the sidewalk ordinance.
So to, to relieve the developer of the sidewalk provision would be up to engineering to do that, or is there a body that would relieve them of that provision?
Not that I'm aware of. You could amend your ordinance to say there's special conditions where... You could amend your ordinance to say there's special conditions where it's, that it would be inappropriate to place a sidewalk. If you ask me, your relief lies in changing your sidewalk ordinance.
Not here.
Just for clarification, Arman, we did not vote in the Planning Commission requesting not having to do the sidewalk.
Right.
We had a discussion of the projects and how people would be flowing across there. I think it was given an absolute view that that would be a safety issue, that people roll past the light and not come back. So, we started wanting to look at what's safe.
Right. And I know you're not seeking relief from it, I just wonder if we ought, what is the mechanism to even get relief from that? Because I agree with you that people will walk that, if they walk that sidewalk and they get to the east end, where are they going to go? And then we'll probably have to put a curb cut there. Let's put a curb cut so they can roll right into the street, right at the end of the, that's what we do, we put curb cuts at the end of sidewalks.
There is a curb cut already. That's, that would be the other exit to the sidewalk.
But on the east end of his sidewalk?
Yeah, on the east end, there is a curb cut. There will be a curb cut. That's an exit driveway to go east.
There's just no managed crossing. The problem would be people crossing, or trying to continue on on that side of the street from that neighborhood.
Okay. I guess I'm not really sure what a remedy is to that issue. Mr. President, you got any?
It seems to me, the, for some reason, the onus is put on us to make a decision where it should be in law and do what, do the right thing. Now, if it's not in law and we have to go do a new resolution, we've got to go change the law, I think it becomes a headache, and we'll get back into what we just got out of.
Mr. President, an alternative would be if we approved the project with the sidewalk and maybe lose the developer's separate request from areas to that, outside of that. If you give the formal of our project, maybe make it more formal and...
Well, here's what I would like to do. One, I would like to ask our architect on council to kind of take spearhead this, one. But also, I'd like to try to find a date and time, as soon as we can, as many council individuals that can make it, to visit the site and see, as a unit, what we're actually talking about, and what we want to do, and what we need to vote on. And ask Mr. Carley, and bring him in after our visitation, and he'll give us the legal interpretation of what we can and cannot do. And we need to be on the money with this project. I think it's a good project, but we need to be on the money on what we're doing. Are we making a legal decision, a correct decision, at this point? I think we then ask the community, without a doubt. But the sidewalks, and no sidewalks, and the bluff is very important at this point in time. So, I think that's where we need to go. Any other questions of Mr. Shemany?
Mr. President, more for the solicitor, for Mr. Carley. So, you're saying that the sidewalk has not, we're not, we're talking about the ordinance, or the...
The conditional.
The conditional use component. We're talking about, so the sidewalk is a, is enforced by, or expected through the engineering, through an engineering department and ordinance, based on their expectations. So, the dialogue between the engineering department and the zoning hearing, or whoever the other peripheral groups are, the engineering is saying, by the letter of the law, there needs to be a sidewalk, because it's a new construction. The other question is, does that letter of the law increase an, or make an unsafe environment for citizens? So, okay, so, I mean, I just want to make sure I'm looking at it. I mean, I understand the point of new construction sidewalk and all of that, continuity, flow, all those things. Actually, ironically designed for safety, I think. So, maybe we should really look at that, that component. Maybe that's the way we adjust, or, again, as Mr. President said, kind of look at it and see what the appropriate legal way of dealing with it is. Because if the point of the engineering department in that sidewalk component of the ordinance is safety, but in this instance, it could increase or decrease the level of safety, you know, maybe that's why we have amendments and adjustments to ordinances. So, maybe there's, I mean, that might be the way to do it as well.
Mr. President, I think the other thing, too, that we have to, when we address that, is be a little bit forward-thinking, and not just think of development with this project, but to think of development as the Bayfront expands, and give ourselves a little wiggle room that, in the event that future Bayfront planning stuff develops to the east, that we don't pigeonhole ourselves and say, "Well, we, there's no sidewalk here," and then development occurs, or the PennDOT changes the traffic pattern there to expand the sidewalk, and then we're stuck without a sidewalk where we should have one. So, I would just advise us, as we move forward, to be deliberate and judicious in any decision, and give ourselves that ability to make those adjustments as development expands.
Very good point. Thank you.
Just one comment. Or put in that stipulation that if there is that development to the east, that maybe not at the time of your development, maybe three years down the road, we know some development is happening to the east, that you know you're going to have to put a sidewalk in at that point. I mean, it's...
And I think that they, you know, they mentioned that they'd be willing to do that, you know what I mean? So, I think this is the whole process.
It's not that we're, we're not trying to butt heads. We just want to do it right.
I think everybody's saying the same thing, we just got to figure out how to do it.
Instead.
You know, at the end of the day, so...
Good point. Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah, I thought, very good point by Mr. Merzke. The, the future is, you know, we don't know what's going to happen with that part of the site, whether it's going to be developed or whatever. But I think it's almost like a temporary variance that the owner will request because of the current safety issue that's present. And all very good points that were brought up, but I think, I think it would definitely want to come from the owner asking for variance, and we go through our process, and we study the issue. Because I think maybe in the future, it would make sense to put a sidewalk there, but currently it does not. So, all very good points.
Now that we all have very good points...
What's your point?
What's your point? Well, I, I think it's, again, it's a very good project, and I'm excited about it. We need to meet with the engineers and the legal department, and I think we can go from there. I don't think it's a big deal.
Mr. President, can I just ask Mr. Kennedy a question? Are we, I don't know if I'm jumping the gun, so...
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy, there were some concerns brought up about minority participation in the project, and local participation in the project. Can you address that?
We use a subsidiary, Cobblestone, to do the construction of the project, and I'd be happy to find local mix, was it, of local versus there. I know they have a couple of crews that come out, but just more local delts on, it's more effective than the, but I could get you the mix on that. I know we encourage them to hire as many local contractors as they could, and even framing was all done by a Corry contractor. So, I'd be happy to find us one.
If you, yeah, if you could get us that information, I'd appreciate it, just for my own personal benefit.
Well, we will not vote on this today, of course. We will vote on it at our next meeting, am I correct? In between that time, council, we need to communicate via phone, email. Any questions, let's all be on one accord when we return.
Mr. Whisfrin, the, we'll have a meeting between now and the next meeting to take a look at the site and discuss the sidewalk options with engineering and the solicitor's representative. Would we have the developer walk the site? Or we just report to him after?
Yes, we need to invite Mr. Kennedy, and if he can't make it, one of his people should be there to answer some questions on site. So, yes.
Very good. Because that's really the one question, only question we have remaining at this juncture is the sidewalk, correct? Okay, thank you.
Okay. I think this public hearing, it's adjourned at 10:30, 10:25.
That takes us to committee reports, Mr. President.
And I would like to thank all the individuals who came here on this project today. It was good to see the interest. Okay, committee report. Dr. Merzke.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to report. I attended the Ice House Gang annual dinner in historic Little Italy at St. Paul's Center.
One moment, Mr. Merzke. Ladies and gentlemen, we are continuing our meeting. Could we hold it down inside the chamber, please? Thank you. Continue, Mr. Merzke.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, I attended dinner with the Ice House Gang in historic Little Italy. The Ice House Gang is a group of gentlemen, a lot of them in their 80s and 90s. Mr. Kowalski was there as well. I didn't mean it like that, Cas. Part of the gang, or? Cas isn't part of the gang. Cas was invited. I apologize, Mr. Kowalski. But preserving the heart and soul of Little Italy, and I really thanked them for the invitation to be there. It was a great event, and a lot of camaraderie, remembering the old days of Little Italy, and a lot of them are still invested in that neighborhood.
Could you please take your side conversations outside? We're trying to conduct business. Thank you, Mr. Merzke. You can try again.
Take three. Yeah, so, they were, they really are still invested in that community and care about that Little Italy neighborhood, and I thank them for being a part of that. There was also this weekend, the German Festival, and Boots on the Ground, which is a PTSD, Post Traumatic Stress Disorder, group. And there's a lot of young men and women coming back from the war, who are struggling with post-traumatic stress disorder. And I thank Ms. Azaveto for that. I taught, one of my students from prep suffered from PTSD, and this is a very worthwhile organization, and I applaud her for her efforts and encourage her to keep going. One of the things we voted on today, from the fire department, was some new equipment at the cost of $8,700 for shut-offs and nozzles for the Bureau of Fire. That was grant money, so I just want the citizens to know that that was not taxpayer money from local taxes, that was a federal grant that we received, and we had to use those funds up. So, we purchased those things in anticipation of the wear and tear that they always go through, and we use those for the, that. From the Convention Center Authority, I have to report that they're working on the renovation of the Bayfront Sheraton. They awarded their contracts for that. And they also are really close now to opening the public walkway on the GAF property. That should be opening this week, and that will be over 1,000 linear feet of new public access for the citizens that was not there before, when it was a private company. And so, that will be opening this week. I encourage you to come down this weekend and take advantage of those views and that public walkway. I met with Mercyhurst University officials regarding their off-campus students, and there seems to be an uptick in houses purchased up there for rental units. And so, I've talked to zoning, I've talked to code, and we've, we're trying to be more aggressive with landlords who are not registering for the rental inspection program. What's happening is the properties are changing hands, they're immediately putting a "for rent" sign up without going through the process of applying for a rental inspection license and getting the property inspected. And I remind people that that inspection is for safety. When you rent, you know, it's a fire check, it's an electrical check, it's to make sure that the residents that live there are safe. The other thing that we have to be, that I've asked code to be enforcing vigorously is the zoning in R1, which is low-density residential. A lot of landlords are packing four, five, six kids into a house that was designed with, it's a three-bedroom house. And it's not so much that the kids are there, but the commotion that it causes with the traffic and the parking and everything else. And I know, again, Councilman Kowalski's been on top of this as well, we go to all the Mercyhurst Neighborhood Watch meetings. And two more things, and then I'll be done here. One, schools back in session, please observe all school zone and buses. When they have their stop signs out, do not pass them. Be safe, be aware of the kids. And finally, there seemed to be a theme today, and it really, it centered around jobs. Councilman Kowalski sponsored and I seconded a resolution, similar to the resolution that we did a few months ago, actually, it was about a year ago, when they originally announced the proposal to shut the postal mail-sorting facility down. And one of the things that really concerns me, and I think, is that our representatives in Washington need to step up and represent Erie. This is our community, these jobs are not jobs that, when we have our taxpayer dollars, you know, there's this theme to, to cut, to cut, to cut. But we pay taxes to get a service. And when our service is cut here in Erie, I applaud us for standing up for the local citizens and saying, "Wait, we want our dollars' worth out of our taxes." And we want our dollars' worth out of, in service for what we provide for the government. And it's very important to fight for those jobs, so, Cas, I thank you for that. And also, the jobs that are created with all the development on the Bayfront, from this hotel, to the Convention Center Authority Hotel, to the parking garage, development means jobs. And this city is desperate for jobs, so I thank people for investing in Erie, investing in our community, and putting people to work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Brennan?
Thank you, Mr. President. I attended a couple of different events this past couple of weeks here. One was up at Mercyhurst High School. The Mercyhurst High School put together a community art project with artist Todd Scully. At first, when I heard about the project, I wasn't sure how it would turn out, because trying to kind of melt a mural with the architecture up there, but I think it did a wonderful job, it was very tastefully done. Really, you know, the talent that was involved with the students and the creativity with the students, and also the artists, were really quite incredible, I thought. It's really detailed, it's really amazing, so go take a look when you get a chance. But it tells a story about the Mercyhurst High School, and just by looking at the images, the graphic images, there's some wording, and it's really a great community project that they're going to really cherish for a long time. I attended the Port Authority meeting on August 26th. At that meeting, Brenda Sandberg was appointed as the new executive director for the Port Authority. I wish her congratulations in her new role and her leadership position, and look forward to continuing to work with Brenda on, continue to move our city and our, of course, our waterfront forward. And also, congratulations to Ray Schreckengoss, who's going to be retiring soon with Brenda taking over. I think our waterfront has come a long way under his reign. Continued growth in recreational and also industrial activities of waterfront is really been a huge change, and I remember back when I was a child going down there, it was just dirt road, and now it's just so much going on, it's really, it's really quite, quite amazing. I also have a council tribute that I'm going to give to Mr. Schreckengoss later in the day, and there's an event going on later today, which to really thank him for his service to our community. Also, I wanted to note that the Erie 911 Memorial is going to have their grand opening on Thursday, September 11th, at 10:30. Everyone is invited. There is a lot of work and a lot of community offerings from different companies and different various contractors on the project, and we want to thank them, and we will do that at that time. Also, I do want to mention, thank you for Jake Rao from the Erie Regional Chamber of Growth Partnership, who was at our meeting earlier today and explained to council what he's doing for the Project Jobs Initiative. And I think, as Jake had mentioned, is that we really need to keep spreading the word and get a lot of this information on, in their possession, so that we could really connect people with these jobs. You know, there's a lot of young people out there that, you know, may know about opportunity, but I think this will really connect the employers with, with these younger people, and also, you know, everyone, actually. And I think it'd be a great thing to continue to work with this, and hopefully it's going to be successful and keep, keep making, bringing these jobs forward in Erie. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Jones?
No report this time, Mr. President.
Very good report, Councilman. Very good report, Councilman Jones. Councilman Kowalski?
You mean the 80-year-old man? We need to put that in context, Bob. There is no Ice House no more.
I know there isn't. They're the Ice House Gang. I said, that's their, that's their name.
The original Ice House was actually gone when I lived in Little Italy and there are a great bunch of guys, you're right. And the original crew is, you know, still around and it's an interesting group of guys that hung around in an Ice House and that's how the name got happened. You know, it was, I think, corner of 16th and Cherry. I also saw Bobby and Jimmy over at Zabob along with our president, who has discovered Polish cuisine pretty well. We actually had him speak in a couple of words, so he's, his cultural shift has improved.
Just a little?
Just a little. And Bobby, I want to thank you for your comments on Mercyhurst. As I came back from vacation, I was stunned to see once again, two houses at the bottom of my hill suddenly turn into rentals, but what alarms me is that here we are talking about sidewalk ordinances and we got ordinances on the book about paving the front lawn and I'm not sure if they did that in these two properties. You know, it seems to be that's a loophole people are getting through. Now, we're not gonna really stop in the most cases, but they need to go through the proper channels about, when we're talking about water retention and, you know, the constant blacktopping of our, of our city. And I, too, am concerned about the R1 because once again, six cars are parked in the one driveway, five in the other. Now, I know I keep hearing this, they got a lot of visitors. Jeez, they must be there all the time because of same cars. So we need to be a little more vigilant, our code people. And we need to start, even if they, you know, going back and checking where they took out the proper permits. I will get you the address. And I want to thank my colleagues here about the post office. You know, I don't know how much weight we'll have in this issue, but we gotta, we gotta start somewhere because the constant erosion of Erie as a major city. We know first it's the VA hospital, they tried to get out of here, then it was the civil service testing, it's the post office. I remember years ago, I read how my grandfather actually filed his immigration papers in Erie and now immigrants have to go to Pittsburgh. Well, if I wanted to live in Pittsburgh, I would've lived there. And, you know, it's time that, you know, it's not about the 120-mile difference, which in the south or in other parts of the country isn't a major issue, but we all live through our Erie winters and if you've had to take your wife to the hospital in Pittsburgh, like I did one year, you quickly find out how bad the weather can get and how you wish you had a four-wheel drive. Because there are times when you can't get to these places. So, you know, I, I hope we have a little input and I, I agree with Bob, it's time our legislators, especially on a federal level, start remembering who they represent. So with that, thank you and I'll move on.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Rancunso?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in follow-up to our public hearing today, we, I think we were pretty excited to hear about this project that Mr. Kennedy presented. I think many of us, for years, have been looking at that piece of land on the south side of the bayfront that Mr. Kennedy owns and wondering what might go there and hoping that something might go there. It dovetails nicely with the timing, with the Port Authority putting in the Cascade Walkway. Since I've been on council, people have been talking about how if they live up on Front Street or Second Street, they can't get down safely to the events on the north side of the Bayfront Parkway. So, you know, for, for many years, we've talked about that and tried to come to some solution and this solution of putting this walkway that's gonna meander down the bluff and then, and basically at Mr. Kennedy's property and then have that traffic signal that people will be able to press to cross the bayfront and get over to Liberty Park. I think it's a great project and works well together. The other thing that we appreciate about this project is that it's privately financed and privately owned. We've had development at our bayfront, many of us have talked about it over the years, that's been driven by municipal authorities and been financed publicly. You know, obviously, there's a difference when we have private developers and we certainly appreciate them investing in our city. And we also appreciate the, the developer working within our waterfront conditional use zoning ordinance. There are no variances requested for this project. There's no variances being awarded. The height is being met, so they're meeting the standards that we've set forth in our waterfront conditional use that are meant to enhance the bayfront and also provide public, you know, some, some use or at least appreciation of the site. So I think that this project will come together quite nicely for us. The other item just to mention for the go-to-the-orders is that we have our finance committee scheduled following this meeting and we will be having the representative of the auditing firm that does the city's audit, McGill Parambell, will come and speak with us so council can become informed and ask any questions regarding the audited process, auditing process for the city's financial statement. So we have that following this meeting today and thank you very much.
Thank you. I just have a, a couple of things, maybe three. I did speak, I said last meeting, I spoke with the chief regarding the cameras on the police car and they are very, very expensive. He has researched and continued to research for grants that will allow us to do that. So it's not something that the ball has been dropped, it's just gonna take time and I feel that we'll get one, two, maybe three, but we need to find a grant that will take care of that concern. And I thank Mr. McDonough for bringing it up. Secondly, another safety matter, when, to, to young folks, middle-aged folks, when you're riding your bike in the street, you should be riding with the traffic versus riding against the traffic. I've almost seen several accidents because you're riding to it and you get a little shaky and the driver don't know what you're gonna do. So you should ride with the traffic. And if you're walking or jogging, then you jog coming facing the traffic. Well, you should be on the sidewalk first and foremost, but a lot of people do jog in the street. So you gotta be very, very careful. And to those joggers that ran in front of me yesterday on 12th Street, you need to go to church because I almost clipped you. I mean, he just ran right in front of me and then he ducked a, oh, he wasn't that fast. But anyway, I passed inspection, my brakes work. That's all I have. Teresa?
I just have a couple of things. The aggregate board is currently searching for managers for two of our investments and a new custodian and that's gonna continue through September. And then, once we get the proposals, we're gonna review, pick a few potential managers, interview. So by November's meeting, we'll be able to bring all that information to the board and then we can discuss and see what changes we're gonna make, if any, to the investments. And the pension plan as of June 30th had a value of $224 million, so that's progressing as the market is increasing. And the last thing is the audits for all the pension plans for police, fire and the O and E have been completed. So if anybody needs a copy or wants a copy, they're in my office, so that's it.
Thank you very much. Very good report. The administration?
Thank you, Mr. President. Getting back to the resolution regarding the general mail facility, Mayor Sinat did send a letter to Senator Casey last week. He also met with two representatives from, Representative Kelly's office, indicating the importance of maintaining those jobs here in the city of Erie. Not only are they jobs, but they're family sustaining jobs. They pay good wages and it's very important to the city of Erie and the county of Erie that we work to keep those jobs here in, in the city. If council wishes, I can offer a letter, the letter that Mayor Sinat drafted and, and sent to Senator Casey's office, to be included in the minutes of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Carley?
Mr. Wanaskey was supposed to give my report.
All right. Good comeback. This meeting is adjourned.
Council adjourned at 10:41. Mr. Witherspoon, Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rancunso, Mr. Jones, Mr. Kowalski, Mr. Merzky, Mr. Wanaskey.